Good evening. Uh oh, did I say that too fast, Kyle? Let's try that again. Good evening. City of Lamarck City Council Regular Agenda of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at six P M. Council members at eleven oh nine B Bayou Row Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According with section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer and the Quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be. And will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Row Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public. And this meeting will be brought and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called order. Kira, would you give us a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B. Councilmember District C is not going to be with us tonight. Councilmember District D. Present and Mayor.
Present. Uh invocation and pledge allegiance. I would like to ask Councilwoman Yancy to lead us in our invocation. And Councilwoman McCallum to lead us in our pledge, please.
Let's bow our heads. Father God, we come to you thanking you, God, for the miracle of waking up this morning. God, we thank you that you have blessed us to lead this city. As you have blessed us to have an interest in the citizens and the children of this city. We pray that you would just protect us. Give us divine direction on how to make the best decisions for the people you have created. Lord, we love you and we thank you. And we pray that your will be done in our great city. We pray. Amen.
Which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
All right. We have, uh now we have before us presentations. There are, there is one proclamation, two introductions and staff recognition. Here, is there anyone here tonight? For our Black History Month. Oh, yes, you want to come here? You are Black History Month. Councilwoman Yancy is the first African American female. Considered as a council member of a great city, so. Office of the Mayor, City of Lamarck Proclamation, where its Black History Month can be first at far back at nineteen fifteen. But it's only been officially recognized since nineteen seventy-six after a public call to action by President Gerald Ford. Whereas our Durham's Black History Month provides opportunities to gain deeper understanding of African American history. Not increase effort for quality and freedom. As well as the achievements and contributions of African Americans. That made us shaping this country and its communities. Whereas. The national theme for Black History Month twenty twenty-three is Black Resisting. And whereas vision being honors generations of black organizers, intellectual, farmers, politicians, and everyday people. Who have fought to realize this nation's promise of life, liberty, and truth to the past. Whereas it is clear great strides have been made towards realizing more equitable nature. It was committed to defending the progress set upon me. Continuing to confront the actions that threaten the safety and rights of all members of our community. And now therefore, we, the mayor and city council urge all citizens and businesses to join. And hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty-three as Black History Month. In Lamarck, encourage all of our citizens to join, all of us. In recognizing the month of February as Black History Month. And in testimony, whereof witness my hand and the seal of the City of Lamarck. This tenth day of February twenty twenty-three, he fell mayor. Let's give a round of applause for Black History Month. Councilwoman Yancy is our walking Black History. Get her report so I can have this one day.
And, and this is why it's funny today about this, um Black History, American History. Um and a history teacher since two thousand and twelve. And now serving as the educational state chair for the N L A T C for education. Now reading, um, uh. What is it? Marvel Fall this week. What we are saying is that every American matter. Regardless of what color you are, that's what makes America an amazing nation with our diversity, who we are. And one thing that I love about it is, you know, one day, maybe we don't have to do it this way. Because our history will be included in the American textbooks, right? And will, it will be considered as American history. So that's what, uh, this month was for, was created to bring that recognition. And I'm hoping in what it'll pay that we will one day be one nation. Where, where our color is a part of who we are, but not all of who we are, right? And so I just want to thank the mayor and the council for not forgetting the shortest month of the year. On the calendar year as Black History Month, the one day we hope. That we will all be included as part of American history. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yancy. Uh, we are now up to two introductions. There are two members of our community that. We want to bring for our communities, we introduce them. The first is Mr. Tenfold, who is the new, uh, director, I think director's president. Of the Texas City of Long Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Mr. Pope.
Well, yours. Do you need me to go to the microphone or can I stand right here?
I think you can stand right here.
It's dangerous for him to take the mic from the microphone because it's more free, so. It's absolutely a wonderful day to be in Lamarck, Texas.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm extremely excited about being here. I had the opportunity to visit with the mayor. We had a, a nice time to. Been an hour or so together last week and I had some time to visit with your, your city manager, uh, also your economic development director and I tell you what. If you're not excited about some of the things that are taking place in Lamarck, uh, I don't know what it takes to get you excited. Because there is a lot of good growth, a lot of economic development that's taking place. A lot of communities would be very jealous. Of what y'all have going for you here. And so if y'all are to be commended on your efforts, I'm excited to be a part of that. Uh, all I can do is I've been in technical work a little over thirty years. And, uh, in economic development work as well. And I shared some of that with the mayor the other day. And I just look forward to be able to share some of that knowledge with you. I don't know if I would use the word wisdom, but I would share the same knowledge. Uh, to be able to work and advance the, the, advance the growth of the city of Lamarck. So glad to be with y'all. Look forward to working with everybody.
Good welcome, Mr. Pope. And now we have come to the introduction of, uh, our new, but I don't know how new we are in tenure. I believe you've been here how long now?
Since July.
Since, oh, so you are. Mrs. Crystal Christensen, our new campus director at Mainland Preparatory Academy.
I'm gonna use the mic because my throat is going out, so. So you're gonna have to forgive, my voice is going out. So normally I don't need the microphone. But today I'm gonna use it. I just want to thank you all for having me here. Um, if you can't tell about half this room is mainland preparatory, there's some of the wonderful teachers here. We've got fourth grade, Mr. Roberts, Ms. Reese, fourth grade. Third, fourth grade, Ms. Washington Kinder. We have Ms. Fannis, who is our second grade. We have pre-K Ms. Smith. We have our PTO President and Treasurer, Wave High. We have Ms. Lee, who is third grade math. And we have the Assistant Director, Ms. Randall, right here. So. Proud of the fact that they're here. Um. We're really excited. We have heard so much about the economic development. And we really look forward to growing as a campus. Um. My personal goal was, Mainland Prep was an outstanding reputation. And the company I worked for came in and is kind of gone downhill a little bit. My personal goal is to make it go back to where it was when Ms. Merchant and Ms. Green owned it. And to bring it back to the standard which it was in the community. I want more community involvement. I want these standards to go up. And our enrollment to go up, to have our kids be more nurtured. Um, we, I've had a chance to get to know a little bit about, more about Lamarck. And it's amazing the opportunity that's going on here in the next couple of years. I am truly amazed. I could not believe when I started listening to what everyone had to say, all the economic and the growth that's happening in this area. Wow. I don't know where you're gonna fit everything. I don't. It's kind of like everybody's coming down and everybody's moving up. It's, yeah. So just, you know, hide the money under the barrel someplace because it's gonna keep rolling in. So, um, I'm just very honored to be here. Oh, I forgot to introduce my newest, newest person, you, Ms. Lamones. She starts tomorrow. She is now. So we're kind of like invading. So anyone else want to come? Come on out. Um, we want every opportunity. So if there is something that mainland our students can get involved in, please let us know. We want to be, I feel that to have all students be involved in something needs to enrich them. Whether it be the last three years mainland has been what's been called a closed campus. The kids have not had a chance to get out in the community. Do any parades, dances, or anything like that. Um, it did not have an athletic program. Well, we are breaking that. Um, we have gone to two parades. We have, uh, now started our athletic program. We are doing flag football. Our team is two undefeated. Thank you very much. In one tide. Yes. Um, and I just, I'm proud of our kids. I've been there since July and we are doing nothing but going up. And that's where we want to be and we want to help. So if there is something that we can be a part of, please don't forget about us. You know, garbage day, anything that volunteer, the nice little lady in the back was showing me the volunteer form. So we are ready and able to be there. But I look forward to it. My name is Dr. Christiansen, so. Look me up, Mainland Preparatory. Thank you, folks.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. This last presentation that we're gonna make tonight is of some significance. Uh, in light of what has happened here, uh, in our recent past in the city. Many of you know, uh, that on December fourteenth, uh, there was, uh, a potential, uh, emergency event. Uh, that could have occurred at our city hall. Our, uh, city manager. In his, uh, in his zeal to be a, a public servant. Made a decision that, uh, he believed would be of assistance to one of our community members. That decision caused a lot of fear and trepidation in our staff. We know as a council and as a community. That Mr. Garcia never intended to, uh, to cause those experiences. The council met with Mr. Garcia. Uh, the council directed Mr. Garcia to obtain additional training. Uh, in the area of crisis and group crisis intervention. And I'm pleased to announce and to present to Mr. Garcia today. About two months after this incident, a certificate of completion. Uh, this certificate test that Seba Garcia has attended a curriculum. Uh, a group course entitled Assisting Individuals in Crisis and Group Crisis Intervention. There were twenty-seven contact hours. Provided by the International Critical Incident Stress Foundation Incorporated. Uh, he attended this class, uh, from January through. It was through the February second. Through the February second, uh, and you have completed this course. So, Mr. Garcia, please come down here and receive your certificate. We have developed staff members of our great city. The council has heard you. And we have responded. The city manager has heard you. He's responded. And so we, uh, we are hopeful that we can now move forward, uh, with a different one. Did you get it?
I got three. Let me tell you what, I can get ten more.
Book the internet was in the newspaper. Uh, it was public. Uh, and so whenever those types of things happen, we want to make sure that when our staff members, uh, respond. And when they respond appropriately, those things are then ahead of you. So here, congratulations. Let's move on. Ms. Christiansen?
What I do?
I just wanted to let you know it's six thirty. And you have a room full of teachers who I assume have lesson plans. This is the juncture where we allow you to leave if you want to.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Nice meeting you all. Thank you very much.
Only, oh, Ms. Christiansen, only because we know that you all are going home to work on lesson plans. Otherwise, you would be required to stay as long as the rest of us. All right. We're now on item five. Which is citizen participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business. Who signed up may speak to council limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, give the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name. Your address and item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you are participating by phone. Uh, if you are participating, uh, via Zoom, um, on a smartphone, tablet, or computer. You may unmute yourself by pressing the, uh, microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen. If you are attending in person, you may approach the podium to my left and to your right. Uh, provide your name, address, uh, and you will be allowed three minutes to speak. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak tonight?
Yes.
Very good. Name, address, uh, and, uh, you have three minutes.
Joseph Lowery, twenty-five oh three Cedar Drive. Um, and then after me, uh, Sarah would like to speak as well, um, with her three minutes. My three minutes is I, uh, offered a few months back. Uh, we had twenty thousand dollars that somebody was willing to pay for a forensic audit because the city has never done one. To my knowledge in over ten years. Now, they have done the routine audits that is not a forensic audit. They've done that annually as, as most companies or cities should. Uh, but they have never had a forensic audit. And I am at this date willing to spend thirty thousand dollars and I hope this doesn't fall on deaf ears. And I would love to work with the auditing company to tell them when, what, when. Where and how, when, where, who, and how. Um, I would love to provide that information. I look forward to it. And it would be good for everybody. I mean, if there's nothing to hide. Which we all know there is, but if there's nothing to hide. Then that would clear the air for the community. So I ask again my counsel. To put in for a forensic audit. This is another request. For a forensic audit of the city's books. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lowery. Uh, is Ms. Doherty available?
Here she is.
Ms. Uh, Doherty, name, uh, an address, ma'am, please.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Name and address, Ms. Doherty.
Yes, sir. Uh, two five zero three Cedar Drive. My name is Sarah Doherty.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Um, as everyone here on council is aware of a criminal complaint that was previously filed against Mr. Joseph Lowery. That was publicly announced that has caused harm to his personal and business reputation. And I was just, you know, I was wondering how many lives can be ruined by one counsel? By one person or, or maybe two? How many lives are going to have to suffer? How many people are gonna have to lose their paychecks because we don't agree politically with somebody? And there's no reasoning. And in an attempt to properly clear his name. We're going to be filing our own criminal complaint against mayor and council tomorrow morning. The top elected official in the city of Lamarck violated Texas Penal Code thirty-six oh six obstruction or retaliation in Texas Penal Code. Thirty-seven oh eight, false report to law enforcement agency. So for, if you guys don't know what that is, um, the thirty-six oh six, the Texas Penal Code. Occur, occurs when a person intentionally or knowingly harms or threatens to harm. Another by an unlawful act. In retaliation. For or on account of the service or status of another. As a public servant, witness, or informant. And the thirty-seven oh eight, that's a false report to a peace officer, federal special investigator, law enforcement employee, corrections officer. Or jailer. A person commits an offense if. With intent to deceive, he knowingly makes a false statement. That is material to a criminal investigation and makes this statement. So, um, I just hope that you guys can take that into consideration and. Just, I guess, go from there. And that's it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
And if, if I could, ma'am, just, I, I know there was comment about taking it into consideration. The council can't deliberate on those.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Thank you, Gus. Any other persons online? All right, we move now to the persons that are in person today. Uh, and we have, uh, Jose Ramon Diaz. Welcome, Mr. Diaz. As always, your name and address.
Jose Ramon Diaz, twenty-five twelve Stonewall Street. Next to the water tower. I had the same problem I've had the last two years. Water's still in the ditch. Mud. I'm running a mosquito farm over there. You know, you get in the car before you do. They get in the house before you do. Frogs everywhere in the yard. It's crazy, man. It still need to be fixed. I don't know.
That's that. Mr. Diaz, we, we hear you. Uh, we cannot respond to you, uh, because it's, it violates the Open Meetings Act, but we definitely hear you. Um, Mr., can you?
I did speak to, uh, Mr. Diaz right, right before the meeting and we're gonna schedule some time to get together, at least tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So definitely, if, uh, if, if you don't get anywhere with that, then you can definitely call us, email us, or whatever, and we can definitely visit with Mr. Garcia.
Call you, email you. Every time I come over here and sign up and see you. Write your name, add in the phone number, and that's it. I mean. I don't hear nothing. Don't call none.
A lot of people don't, I, I can't get into discussion with you.
Well.
Uh, Mr. Diaz, but point of information, we don't, we don't actually office out of city hall as, as representatives, but I can't go any further than that. That's why you don't see us here. Can't go any further than that, uh, without violating the Open Meetings Act. But definitely, we hear you as a council. We hear you. And he's gonna, he's gonna definitely.
Call you in the morning. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Lamones. Welcome, Ms. Mary. Name, address. Name and address, as always, Ms. Mary.
Yes, Mary Lamones, twenty-seven oh nine John Street here in Lamarck. Been a resident for seventeen years.
Donna Hayes, um, thirty-two twenty-five Avenue A, Santa Fe, Texas, seven seven five one oh. Thank you. Okay, um, just wanted to currently, um, invite you guys out to one of our events and letting y'all know what's going on. Of course, uh, most of y'all kind of know me. I am the president of the newly formed, um, Lulac Mainland Council that we've been doing a lot of community events. She here is my treasurer, so, um, part of Lulac as well. So we've been doing several community events. Um, I don't know if anybody can remember from last year, Single Day Mile being our first one. Um, from the BFW, um, memorial with the flags, um, distributions. And we did a scholarship banquet, um, that awarded eight recipients, five hundred dollars. So we are nonprofit in what we're doing as well. Uh, we did a back-to-school drive that was held here at the library and, um, backpack, which, um, wonderful, wonderful, Ms. Councilwoman, um. How do you pronounce your name? It's McCall. Okay. Um, was, um, kindly and generously helped us with that, um, as well. So we thank you. We did have like a hundred and thirty backpacks. And so we're looking forward to having you guys, um, help us with that again. Um, last, but at least the toy drive that was, um, done in December. So, um, as you can see, a lot of our, um, fundraising, um, do go to student scholarships. We also give back to the community. So it's not just a take, um, thing. It's good for the, our youth. Um, that's. Ms. Yancy and then like Dr. Christiansen said, um, they're, they're the ones, they're our future. So we're always trying to help build them up and encourage them to do things and to speak for it. So, um, with that being said, we want to invite you guys, and I did pass out the little flyers and, uh, pictures of all the recipients from last year that we awarded. Um, again, we were just started a year. It's only been a year. Uh, Mr. Companion, he knows all about Lulac. He's actually one of the members on a different council. Um, but we're looking at having it at the Highland Bayou. The, um, it's Mac, it's Mac, McAfee, right? I'm pronouncing that right. The Highland, um, Bayou Park that's right here on forty-five. We're, um, hoping to do a two-day event, which is for May fifth and May sixth. So, um, look, a lot of people are looking for the Single Day Mile, um, event. So that's gonna be on that actual day for those of you that sometimes, what day is it? Well, it's Single Day Mile, so, um. Also, I mean, it's gonna be a day filled with entertainment, um, around thirty vendors, um, ten community, um, vendors, which we all want y'all to participate. Um, I've also want to include a lot of the local businesses and give them discounts to having their booth out there because again, we're trying to build up, um, the city of Lamarck. Uh, we're also gonna have Kittyland, um, slingshots will be there on Friday, lowrider shows. And then we are also adding with, um, Texas Pit Stop gonna be running at a steak, um, cook-off for Saturday. So we have a lot of things that are gonna be coming soon, um, hopefully. Um, last year we did have it here, um, at Cat's Place locally, but, um, it was just the parking was a big issue for us. So that's why we decided to move it to a bigger area so we could have more room, um, as well. Um, so we are hoping.
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
We are hoping, well, Lulac Mainland Council is, I'm hoping that you guys would like to partner with us, with us, because it's a great event, give a lot of, um. Encouragement to the city and also the surrounding cities that y'all can, um, represent us and what we're doing. You know, we're always trying to build others up and with the, um, the youth. And if it would be possible to help waive all of our, or the, the fees of the park, which I do know that's kind of like a thousand dollars to have it out there. Again, we are nonprofit, trying to raise money for our student scholarship. which I do know that's kind of like a thousand dollars to have it out there. Again, we are nonprofit, trying to raise money for our student scholarships. Also, in the vendor fees, um if that was also something we could um help, y'all guys could help us with. Because that's where we make our profit off of, anything received from the vendors or um the events that we have for the crafts. Um and any permit um fees, because there's a lot of paperwork and I did see there was like a different permit for a special um commercial application. Y'all have to help me with that, because um Josh or JB probably helped me with that one. So um we are, again, like nonprofit, and we just wanna see if y'all be able to help us out with that. Um if not, you know, maybe next year. I know everybody's already probably done their budget. Um we do also have the back-to-school um coming up, so we are looking at doing those same events that I mentioned this year in the community. So um I'm looking forward to seeing all y'all's faces, Duncan Booth or Mayor, um and all y'all's faces as well. We can ask them. He was, he did, he was a a champ. He um joined, um got in the Dunkin' Booth and was dunked a couple of times, and even Keith Henry was, though. It's um like I said, guys, you know, it's not so much about just, um like even Ms. Yancy said, it's, you know, we're all God's children, so we all just try to help one another out. And that's what we're here to um send that message. So did you want?
I'm just in agreement with Ms. Mary.
I told her, I told her she didn't say that. So again, if you have any questions, you can feel free to look us up on Facebook, Mayland, um Lulac Mayland, two-two four-two-seven. Um you can see a lot of our events that we've posted and raffles that we do and all those good things. Oh, our scholarships for uh students do come out at the end of this month, so if you know of any student that's graduating, please let me know. Send an email to me because we will start um sending those out and they have till March thirtieth to get them into us. So again, and the college ones as well, also college. So we're all, like I said, we're just here to help you guys out.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh we are at I am six minutes. Counsel, we'll take these minutes together. January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, three P M. Special meeting. January ninth, twenty-twenty-three, regular meeting. August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, special meeting. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing number will call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seven ordinances, discussion, possible action regarding approving seven-one. Ordinance number letter O dash two zero two-three dash zero 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 one. Amending section two dash two of the code of ordinances, city of Lamarck, Texas, providing for two regular city council meetings per month, making various findings related to the subject and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, just clarification. Does this ordinance still envision us continuing the practice of if we table an item at a meeting that it's brought up at the sec- at the following meeting, or how is that?
Did you wanna ask that, Gus?
Uh I can or you can?
I was just gonna say, not necessarily.
Right, that's what I was gonna say as well.
That 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 is a re- that is, that is more of uh more of a, I guess you would say, a a resolution the council has placed upon itself. So with two meetings, we can revisit it or you know, we can revisit that part, part of it. Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Resolutions. Unless otherwise specified, the city managers authorized to execute all necessary documents upon final approval by the city attorney. Eight-one, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-three dash zero zero one-one. Authorizing the Economic Development Corporation to renew the professional services agreement with Retail Strategies. Is Alex?
He is not, but I'm.
Are you prepared to?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Susan.
Uh Retail Strategies is a group that uh uh EDC has contracted with for the past three years. The side of already went to their board for approval. And it it did pass unanimously. Um the funds are available and uh they're ready to proceed with this. If you have no further questions, uh this is a group that they're trying to work with in order to bring in more retail uh into the city.
I, my own, this is an observation. The company is based out of Alabama. If our intent is to generate local opportunities. Uh I would hope that perhaps we can identify some company that's that's nearer to our location than Alabama. That's all.
Mayor, I also have some concerns of, is it uh city manager, are you able to tell us what businesses has Retail Strategies brought to Lamarck? Do we know that?
I cannot at this time, but I can get you that information, bring it back.
Um I'm concerned, um and I guess councilman uh Compania is as well, as far as their deliverables and what they've been able to do. And what um, how do we um grade these companies that we do business with? What have they done? Because there's a lot of, we know from going to T M L, there's a lot of companies that are producing and bringing commercial businesses to our area, and I just would like to know before we vote on it, what have they done? Unless the council wants to go.
We get it. We understand.
And the reason why I say that, I'm, you know, I know we've we've got some traction on the Church's Chicken in my district. But that was traction that was performed by the local people here. And I'm just beginning to uh question if we're spending taxpayer money for this particular uh company, what what have they produced for us?
I think that's a fair question, and I would say I definitely support us seeing a little bit more information about the outcomes of our previous contracts with Retail Strategies.
Certainly. I will make sure that that raises pass out to Alex. I'll make sure he's here to report that next time with all the backup documentation.
So council, do we, uh Kim, are you suggesting that uh you wanna table this?
I make a motion, Mayor, that we table it.
A second, a second.
There is no discussion on table. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight-two, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-three dash zero zero one-two. Approving of an engineering agreement with L J A Engineering, an amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty cent for the two-inch waterline replacement project funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh this is the uh next phase for us to start getting into shovels in the ground, if you will. Uh these dollars have been allocated through the mid-mod allocation that you guys approved for four-point million, four-point one million dollars. After community meetings, we've decided that it would be best use of of these items and a allowable expense to pursue uh waterline repairs, particularly in the, particularly in the uh two-inch um exchange that is necessary, that we've identified through all the uh droughts, uh excuse me, uh leak studies that have occurred uh to the two worst uh areas, two zones, uh particularly or east of the uh State Highway Three in District D. Uh we identify those as the first need um through community feedback, and that's why we're proposing to move forward there. Um you've already approved the funding, you've approved the contract. We just didn't have a dollar amount, so we did all the research based on community feedback. And this is that moving forward, and we're ready to proceed whenever you allow us to.
So this five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars will come from which?
This would be part of the four-point-one million dollar mid-mod allocation, mid-mod through H G A C that you're.
So this is not ARPA? This is not the mid-mod.
This is the mid-mod.
And the second thing is, this is the beginning of the major work that the council uh has envisioned along with the Capital Improvement Committee. The major waterline work in District D. This is what this is.
This is the start of that, yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we can see that practically. Okay. Any other questions?
And I just wanna say, mid-mod is also C D B G.
It is through C D B G and it's the the last bit of the pass-through funds uh due to the horrible storms that were that the community faced.
Okay.
To drill it home even farther, further. The Capital Improvement Committee worked with you and Rick. We, as a council, worked with H G A C. And all of us are working together to produce this wonderful, wonderful project. We're clear.
Yes, sir.
I will, uh Kiara, do we need a motion? I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eight-three, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-three dash zero zero one-three, ratifying payments to Android construction for the total of fifty-two thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars and eight cent, Mr. Garcia.
Unfortunately, we've had our share of water leaks in this past year. Um as we know, the uh threshold of invoices had been uh cut down to twenty-five thousand. Anytime we were spent twenty-five thousand. However, that's not per invoice, that per vendor. So following our 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 purchasing uh rules in that sense, we wanna bring this forward. Uh these were along the lines of some of the burdens and prayers that we've had to do in the last few months. Um these are things that we, either with a limited staff or the trained staff that we currently have uh due to my, due to a small recent changeover and also the abundance. Anytime that the leaks get too overwhelming, that we need to react, we need to get the work done as fast as possible. Um this is one of the two vendors that we typically use. Uh the next phase of this, hopefully here soon, is we'll bring to you a a proposal to get more streamlined and more efficient ways of doing this, but this is one of two that you'll hear tonight. Um and all the information is is there as shown. Again, this is more along the lines of keeping things transparent and showing you any dollars that are being spent, exactly how they're being spent.
Um I move we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on eight-three? Hearing number will call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eight-four, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-three dash zero zero one-four. Approving emergency expenditures for waterline repairs in an amount of thirty-five thousand forty-six dollars and eighteen cent. Again, Mr. Garcia.
This is a continuation of the previous item. It just presented separately because it's separate scope and also separate timing. Otherwise, it would have been all just under one. Uh it's still in line with the amount of dollars we spent last year. Uh unfortunately, we're on pace to spend the same, if not a little bit more. Um it's just a necessary um repair that we need to do.
I move we approve.
Look at you. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
I do have a question there. No, for clarification purposes, this is not the mitigation dollar. This was our regular.
Yes, budget.
Budget, I guess. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Regular operating.
Very good. Uh all those in favor? Any opposed? City managers report, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Uh just wanted to quickly go through here. If you have no particular questions on any of these items. Essentially, we're launching that summer intern report. Um you have our city clerk's annual report in there, along with police annual report. These are obviously available for public view as well. If there's no further questions or anything in particular. As far as a center point, energy gas line, I will say we'll be putting some more information out in that uh regarding that to the public. So that we can better inform them when those changes are coming. That also happens to be in primarily the District D area. Uh so that information will be forthcoming, uh because they are changing some of those uh gas lines out. And then the regular uh streetlight report as to where we are with the progress we've made and the and the continuous uh change out that we're doing of regular uh lights or some of the L E D lights.
Counsel, do we want to uh uh ask that any of these reports be lifted uh tonight? Do we want, in uh in other words, what I'm asking is, would we like to hear a brief synopsis of Kiara's report? She has a wonderful slide in our presentation. Uh in our uh in our information. Um would we like to hear from Kiara? Would we like to hear from uh any other persons available to provide for a report? So you would do, Rick. Uh I would like to hear uh a brief synop- synopsis of Mrs. Nance's report from in Mrs. Nance's words uh with this, Cal, can we put this on the screen? And the reason I'd like to hear is because Ms. Nance uh definitely has a very important uh job function in our city government. Uh and if she has a report, I believe our community members need to hear that report in her words, and it shouldn't take us that long, Kiara, but definitely we need to hear from you.
Um outside of, there's a typo in one of the pages that we were supposed to get fixed. I didn't realize we were gonna pull it to discuss it, otherwise I would have brought. Um it's just uh we've been busy. Um and I I have a bad habit of saying we, but I guess I should remind the community that um I'm a one-person department. So a lot's been going on uh to elections. Those meetings held are actually a hundred and forty um combined between city council and Board of the Commissions.
Yeah.
While we have uh Board of the Commissions liaisons, all of those agendas go through me, same thing for public information requests. Um those all at some point go through my hands. Um we did a lot with records retention this year, which is one of my, one of my best moments. Uh it helped us free up some storage space. Uh we got rid of fourteen thousand pounds of records this year, so we are in total compliance as of I believe October with uh state records retention schedule, so that's really exciting. Um yeah, um just moving forward, it's kind of more of the same, just keep working to streamline processes and digitize and be as responsive to the community as possible. Uh one thing I am proud of is um working um in public information at that rate. We still have an average response time of ten and a half days. Um whereas state average is ten. Um this year, we're gonna work to try to get that to eight, so. That's it.
Any questions for uh Ms. Nance?
What is, oh, apologies. Um I did wanna know, when I saw here the support staff, like what's in particular, what are you envisioning? Like, how are you, it's you training or you sending folks to training?
Yes, so uh a combination thereof. There are some trainings that I go to annually that if uh our training budget supports it, I'd like to start taking some rotating staff out to go to some of those with me. And all some of that is also in-house, me training staff. We do an annual um Open Meetings Act training and uh public information training that I do with staff. Um so just kinda expounding on that a little bit more too.
Cool. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just wanna make a comment, wanna uh commend uh Ms. Nance as far as our uh leadership of of this office. Reminding everybody, went from a a uh budget allocation of two and a half bodies down to one. Um we hope to hopefully garner some of that back this next cycle as we've talked at length. But also I wanted to highlight um that we would like to I would also like to highlight specifically um the fact that fourteen thousand pounds is the, that's seven tons of paper that we got rid of. That was not just this past year. I was properly done. It was documented and it's something that we're, you know, kudos to uh Kiara and to all the staff that helped with that. A lot of different departments helped with that uh as well. It's a very large feat and something that everybody should be very proud of as far as bringing up some of that space.
And I wanna circle back on one thing. Um I, when I read through this the other day, I emailed Kiara right away and I was like, Kiara. We had more than seventeen meetings. You organized far more than seventeen meetings. Get that number right, a hundred and forty. I just wanna highlight again how much uh work is on staff shoulders for meetings, and that is quite a feat, a hundred and forty twen- in twenty-twenty-two. So, thanks. Yeah.
Yeah.
And make sure the right one's on the record. I don't want anyone to think you did anything less than a hundred and forty.
Thank you, uh uh Kiara. Uh any further questions for Kiara? Miss, Ms. Nance. Uh Caesar, did you want to brief the public? Uh and I think this might be the last one as far as I can see. Uh the streetlight outage report, streetlight uh, streetlight upgrade project and streetlight outage report, probably something that they probably wanna hear.
Certainly, um brief synopsis, we have two providers within the city, one being Center Point, the other being uh Texas to Mexico. Um total so far, we've upgraded approximately a hundred and thirty streetlights, uh mostly on the Texas to Mexico, so actually all on that side. Um where that that puts us at twenty percent completion, because you guys know this is uh we're we're year one into a five-year plan to get that done. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule, which is great. Um currently working on the next set of forty-five upgrades, which will be on Westward, Cedar, Bayou and Laurel. So that's the next chunk that uh we hope to address here to hopefully get that done in time for the one year, so we even further ahead uh on that process. Uh Center Point uh has way less. Um but they did report that there was twenty-seven outages, so it's important that we keep reporting. Um, but they did report that there was twenty-seven outages, so it's important that we keep reporting any of these outages. Because when the outages get reported, we can quickly just get them converted uh, versus us doing a whole sweep of conversions for a certain uh, street. Um, so both, both providers have been very responsive. Um, this is a three-phase program. The first phase is conversion to LED. The second one is adding lighting to any dark spots on major roads. And then the third one would be a- adding some community lighting, uh, meaning some of those community uh, roads.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, total projected cost is approximately one point eight million dollars. We do know that we don't have that budgeted right now, but we still want to have a dollar figure. And we're doing as much as we can within the constraints that we have available to get this project moving forward.
So one point eight million dollars do what now?
That's, we need to complete all three phases, which includes the addition of the um, streetlights that are yet to come. Um, we are finalizing, technically completing the uh, new streetlights locations throughout the city from feedback from residents as to what the dark spots were, working through PD, any calls that they've gotten about dark spots. Um, I, we urge you to please keep reporting streetlights that are out. That is a very important part of this project. It is expedited the project. I want to thank you all for your help. But we need more because we know that streetlights go out regularly. So please, regular reporting is very important. Kudos to PD and their uh, 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 night shifts who keep going around the area and, and reporting some of those. They just reported a new, I want to say fifteen lights that they just recognized through this last sweep. So we'll be turning those in and we'll continue uh, growing on that uh, number. So, so we can say it had a schedule.
Okay.
The total phase of what is asked would be one point eight, but it is part of a five-year plan.
Okay.
That's as aggressive as we can be.
Now, since I forget, make a note, I do have a request for two additional lights
Mm-hmm.
on Duro Road between five nineteen and I forty-five South Front Street Road. There are only two lights at the end of each of that block. And uh, individuals that are walking at night would like to get something in between.
Now, I forty-five to?
Uh, five nineteen, so it's a main street.
Got you. Yes, sir.
All right, uh, any other items of note in the city manager, city manager's report that we'd like to have lifted? Moving on, uh, item ten, new business items presented to council uh, for discussion and possible action. Ten, one, twenty-twenty-three legislative update. Discussion possible action regarding establishing legislative priorities for the city of Lamarck for the year twenty-twenty-three. Uh, Mr. Garcia.
Uh, as was requested for us to be more uh, responsive when it comes to the legislative process. Uh, we have dug deeper into that. Thank you all of you for your feedback. Uh, attaches all the information that we have. I do want to stay, uh, add special attention to the uh, memo, the draft of the memo that we have uh, for the appropriations as they align with some of our current feedback from our community. Um, major um, water rehab project, obviously. So that's the, that's the fourth item that's listed as a backup as well as some uh, roadway rehab requests. Those have been the two hottest requests that uh, we have received. And if council supports us to proceed in that manner with our uh, legislative process to zone in on how those particularly affect Lamarck, then that would be a uh, brief uh, synopsis of how we would do it uh, in line with how we just did the recent county bond, street road project. We do know that it's in line with that. You know, three point seven five would, would be what it costs to do about thirteen streets. Uh, and we are identifying which streets are in the worst case based on the reports we've had. Same is true with the water line for that next phase of water line work that we'd like to see done for that next area that is the worst. That's about the cost that would cost to kind of get that up and going. Um, so in line with that, and then what we feel hopefully will get supported, that's what we'd like to uh, move forward with that request.
Counsel, do you have any questions and a comments?
Uh, so I'm, I guess I'm not totally clear. So you need us to vote in approval like that we support just the counties established legislative priorities, right? Okay. Go ahead. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And also, we wanted to add, so there's the counties' needs for that, that, that have been brought before you. Uh, there's also the ones that um, we, we, we will be discussing as a group when we go to Galveston uh, County Day here on the first of March.
Mm-hmm.
And the ones specific to drawing from those that are more specific to Lamarck are those two projects that, that, that fall in line with, with group discussions that we've had.
Mm-hmm.
And so the twenty-twenty-four community project funding, that's to whom?
If you support it, that's what we would start preparing on for the, the next year's cycle. It, it was just in line with what was requested.
Okay, uh, so that's not suggesting that the county is considering another bond uh, election.
No, sir.
Uh, for roads, and they're asking for input. This is completely independent of that. All right, so actually there's two things. You, you're asking us on, on this, to review this, but then you're asking us to take a look at the background information you provided, the resource documents, and to come up with our agreement as to legislative priorities in uh, before the March first visit to Austin, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we would do that then at the next meeting. This would be a carryover, so would give us time to.
If you'd like for me to dig deeper into that, yes. I mean, if you'd like for me to take deeper into what we presented at the brief synopsis, we could do that. Um, and present you exactly more information, or we can go as is now. It's your will.
Counsel, do we want more information? Uh, are we ready to act?
You, you talking about on the legislation booklet, right? So there's nothing we can change. I think they're not excellent.
No, I think, I think the issue, the issue is, I think it sounds like uh, Mr. Garcia is asking us i- if we are uh, we would support the county's legislative agenda as well as our possible legisla- legislative agenda.
Our own individual.
Our own individual.
That's right.
So I guess, I guess you're looking for uh, support in the form of some sort of vote. Okay. Okay. So counsel, are we prepared to vote on this? Do you need this tonight?
We are attending the event on March first, so for this year's appropriations, we've already signed up for whatever the committees would be. If we're going to prepare our document for this upcoming year, then we want to get a head start so we can be ahead of the game.
Okay.
So we could potentially vote, you know, give support for the current legislative agenda and then sounded to me like Jo- like Joe was interested in getting a bit more info on the two other issues, right, that were unique to our city. I'm in favor of that too. I, I'm definitely ready to vote tonight, but yeah, I'm in line with what's on the Cal- the county agenda. Let's give our vote for that and then request for some more information. And I agree, I think we should talk about this before spring of next year.
Yep.
Yeah, because it would be nice if our representatives included us when they were putting this together, or just acts.
And that's what the next, that's what that memo is to start getting that process going.
Yeah, so maybe that would be helpful to know, like, what would this memo, where would it go? If we were to vote in favor of these two, of the water line rehabilitation project and the, or the both rehab projects, like, would you plan on then sharing this with the county commissioners?
County commissioners and directly with our representatives at that level, who would put this on their list.
Right on. Okay. Well,
Hopefully.
I move to approve the current county legislative agenda.
Second.
Did you want to add to that?
Can I put it all in one? I never know how much you can put in one motion. I move that we approve that and I request also more information so that it can be more information supporting the Lamarck-specific agenda items for a future council. See, I told, I told him it was too much in one motion.
Motion ever.
I support the Galveston County agenda and I move that we approve it.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Here now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Casey, we can still stay on that agenda item.
Um, Mr. City Manager, I would like for us to have more information on, do we even need a motion for that one? I feel like we don't, because it was just discussion.
I think we should direct them.
Oh, okay. Then I'll make a motion that you uh, provide us more information on the Lamarck-specific items to be brought before us. I mean, our next meeting, March, I don't know.
We'll be right up there.
Is there a second?
At the second, at the second February meeting, please.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here now, we'll call for a vote. All those, those in favor?
Aye.
Item ten-two, virtual meetings, discussion, possible action regarding the continuation of virtual meeting participation via Zoom. Mr. Garcia, and I believe this is also Ms. Nance as well, uh, and Mr. Caneble. The gang's all here. Have at it.
Um, I'm happy to talk about it a little. Um, with COVID, uh, the governor's office authorized Zoom meetings for councils, for local governments. Um, the government code also authorizes it outside of that. Um, Lamarck has continued it past um, that time. Um, so we, we just brought it forward um, to ask council if they would continue or if y'all continue to want to have these meetings posted uh, for participation via Zoom as well. It's been a while since we asked.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, the question to council is whether or not we want to continue offers, offering Zoom as a participation vehicle for those uh, participating outside of the agenda. It will still be available for those who are a part of our agenda. The question is.
No.
So kind of?
Yeah, help, help us to understand what we're doing.
If we have people doing presentations and things of that nature, then yes, that's a vehicle that's available to them. However, this also, this item also addresses us, council as well.
Y'all's participation. So we can no longer participate on Zoom either.
Not, I mean, it's whatever you guys decide. We're not making a decision.
And it's not, is it an option? I'm just curious to find out the various options. Is it an option to have council participate and not have the public participate? I didn't, I mean, it does, okay, I didn't think so. And so, really, it's sort of we either continue having Zoom, people attend meetings via Zoom unless they are like a special guest star. And um, or, or we don't. We allow it or we don't. Okay. Well, I mean, uh, this is self-serving, um, but, you know, especially now that we have two meetings a week, they're, they'll be on my calendar, but uh, I think there might be times when it, like, it has definitely made it more accessible for me. Um, and I also, you know, we're not overrun by citizens attending our meetings by Zoom, but I think you know, uh, I don't love the way it's allowed for more just instructions to, to a meeting. And I would like for us to think more about what are the ways we can address that, should it happen? But I also do think that it makes our meetings more accessible, and I think that's a good thing overall. That's just my opinion.
Any other opinions tonight?
Uh, Mayor, I'm, I'm going to follow the lead of like even state agencies
Mm-hmm.
uh, that I've provided testimony before Houston Galveston Area Council that still uses the Zoom for participation and or just to continue our current practice of, of maintaining the Zoom meeting option.
Okay. Kim?
I'm fine with keeping Zoom. I think it works for the uh, what am I trying? I think it works for the today we saw it work with our counseling, and I think that's something I think we need to continue. It's important that we get everyone's uh, opinion and everyone uh, representation.
Continue, Mark.
So um, I would, I would add simply this. I think that if we are to uh, act in that way, we should uh, definitely allow for a six-month review uh, to see the impact that this is having uh, on our staff. Uh, uh, not necessarily that we would want to control the program then, uh, but we would definitely want to be able to provide additional resources, uh, if the program is continuing to be effective. Uh, if in fact Ms. Nance would need more resources to continue to deliver this. Uh, so I will entertain a motion that we uh, review this uh, in six months.
To be clear that we maintain our.
We maintain what we're doing. Yes, thank you, Joe.
And review.
And review the policy. I would entertain a motion that we maintain our ability to offer Zoom for our uh, uh, meetings, public meetings, and that we would review this policy in six months.
So move.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any further discussion? Here now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now on item ten-three. Catalytic converter theft prevention proposal. Uh, we know that this council has adopted a safe city initiatives. Uh, we know that our goal is to be as safe as we possibly can be. We believe that can be the safest city in Texas. Part of that uh, is providing for new and effective ways to prevent uh, and prosecute crime. Today, Mr. Garcia is going to provide for us an opportunity uh, to do just that through our, through a catalytic converter theft prevention proposal, proposal, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Agent O'Connor, who has uh, worked diligently with this program. Um, want to also um, share that this, this program uh, was initially brought to us um, by Mayor Potem Campion um, as a potential um, program that
Yes.
that, that, that we wanted to look into. Uh, as was mentioned by Mayor, we, we've talked about property crime being the next thing that we're going to try to uh, work on addressing. Uh, we do know that the theft of catalytic converters has been on the rise uh, nationally, and we want to get ahead of the curve with this program. I'll let uh, Agent O'Connor talk more about it.
Thanks for having me, counsel. Uh, I'm Agent O'Connor, doing with Lamarck Police Department for nine years. The last four assigned for Auto Crimes Unit. Um, specifically, this is uh, trying to combat and be proactive on catalytic converter thefts. Uh, it's been a national rise since COVID and supply shortages. There's a lot of precious metals in these converters um, which make them more valuable, which increases thefts. Um, I did a full workup, uh, spoke with chief, city manager, got a lot of input, um, and did a full breakdown on a proposal. Um, basic summary, the event would be hosted by City Lamarck, right? Let me slow down. The event would be hosted by the City Lamarck for residents as an initiative against catalytic converter thefts. Um, just spoke on that. Uh, officers will spray paint, etch residents' VIN numbers to their vehicles, catalytic converters. This may not prevent the thefts, but is also used as a deterrent. Um, ultimately, if someone steals your catalytic converter and it's recovered, uh, a block down the street, there's no way to get you your converter back and prove that that's your property. Um, and doing this, we will paint the catalytic converters, we'll etch the last VIN of your eight onto um, your converters. So if the same incident happens and that converter is recovered, it can be provided back to you. We know it's stolen and the person in possession can face criminal charges. So it's a good preventative measure. I attended an event with Houston Auto Crimes uh, in December of twenty-twenty-two. We got a good uh, walkthrough on how they um, do their procedures. Uh, and that's kind of how we want to mimic it. Don't fix it if it's not broken. Uh, they use the Walmart's uh, pits and it's, it helps out with liability. The citizen basically drives their own vehicles over the bays. The officers will be underneath it. We paint it, etch it with a Dremel tool. It takes about three minutes per vehicle and then the citizen will be on their way. Uh, we did a full workup. Location we're working on, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with one of the Walmart representatives, myself and chief. So we're working on getting approval for Walmart to use our facility. Uh, and using their facility, they may also donate uh, supplies, which could be paint, gloves, um, die grinders, refreshments and things like that. So it could help us that way. Uh, for awareness, we, we just post on social media, Facebook, Nextdoor app, city website, council meetings like so. Uh, as far as scheduling, you can do a third-party sign-up or we can have it set up where they call dispatch and manually sign up for a block. Uh, the best way for this to work, HPD did it with the three-hour block, so say three PM to six PM. And every thirty minutes you would do ten vehicles. So you're trying to do about twenty vehicles per hour, if that makes sense.
Hmm.
Um, as far as staffing, recommended to do it during a weekday. Um, it's going to take about eight persons. We can use um, myself and a couple of resources from the Auto Crimes Division uh, with the Sheriff's Office. They said we can probably use two to four people depending on um, how how that day is. If we plan in, in, in advance, we can definitely uh, get that on the books. Um, we also have Community Policing Association, so a lot of members can volunteer their hours and help out with that as well. Uh, and possibly have Walmart staffing help in as well. Um, there's a full breakdown on where the eight members would be used and how it would work. Uh, there's also a materials breakdown. Um, HPD Auto Crimes Sergeant uh, Tracy Hicks, who's done these events before. Um, he said he's, would assist with the Lamarck Police Department on the day of the event. He has all the equipment available. All Lamarck would have to provide would be personnel and paint. Uh, paint for the event would be about a hundred dollars. If we're out of pocket for everything else, it's estimated two twenty-five to three fifteen total. Um, and then there's a full breakdown on the procedure and pictures as well um, of our. And then there's a full breakdown on the procedure and pictures as well, um, of our location and the HPD location. If you're interested to see on the slideshow. So that first three are the Lamarck Walmart. That's the pit style bay. The vehicle basically drives over it. The center pieces pop out and you'll be underneath it, uh, etching the vehicles. And then if you scroll down, this was directly from the HPD, vehicle drives over. There's a side view. That's what the pit looks like when it's open. And clearly he's painting it orange. Uh, there's certain colors. Um, I think red was a little cheaper, so we may be going red. But after you paint it, you'll etch it with the die grinder. It's physically engraved into the, uh, catalytic converter. Your eight digits to your VIN number. Um, and there's an index card as an example of what you're writing and, and, um, inscribe on the catalytic converter.
Agent O'Connor, could you please touch on the fact that once they participate in this program, that'll also be added to our database?
Yes, uh, so like I was saying, once, um, once a vehicle is etched, um, we take their information and it can be entered in later on into our database, NCIC, TCIC, for stolen component parts. Like I said before, if someone's catalytic converter gets stolen, there's no way to track it down or recover it. Uh, if you partake in this program and you have etched numbers into your, uh, catalytic converter, we can physically enter it into our database as stolen and it's a higher likelihood to get recovered. And even a higher likelihood that they will avoid your vehicle because they see the bright paint and the etching on the catalytic converters.
I'm just really impressed by this report, Agent O'Connor. Thank you. It had all the information. I had no follow-up questions.
I will say my wife did help, uh, and we'll leave it, leave it at that, so.
Well, um, cheers to her and, um, I, I just love lots of info and all the who, what, where, when, why. And honestly, uh, I don't know what there is to not like about this program. Thank you, Joe, for bringing it to our attention, to city manager. Thank you, chief, and thank you, Agent O'Connor. I mean, great, I'm so excited. I'm definitely in favor of it. And thanks again, and really, uh, you know, maybe we should recruit your wife for things because lots of good info, well done and well organized. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. The value of a catalytic converter on the low side is probably about a thousand dollars, right?
They range depending on vehicles, um, each vehicle has between five and seven grams of the precious metals, um, and these metals at one point were more valuable than gold, um, per gram. So you take that into consideration. So yeah, someone who cuts off your catalytic converter can get five hundred to, you know, fifteen hundred per converter.
Well, even at five hundred dollars, that's felony theft right there.
Correct. Uh, any precious metal is considered a felony theft in itself.
A felony theft. So that's another purpose here, uh, to use this as an education for our community. Go ahead and ruin your life. If you think it's so easy to pull out a catalytic converter, well, folks, you're looking at jail time there, serious jail time. And that's another thought, the, that there are easy outs for some people in our community. And this is not an easy out. Uh, and the second thing, and the flip side of that, is that we've seen countless instances in the news reports of, uh, individuals showing up at, uh, these auto reclaim yards with the back full of catalytic converters. And this is one mechanism to very visibly fight that particular, uh, practice there.
Correct.
Mark should be at the, at the, the head of that.
Yes, sir. Uh, there's also been house bills by Senate passed for stricter regulations for catalytic converters for um, mechanic shops or scrap metal shops who are accepting these. You're supposed to provide a lot more details to be able to do so. Um, Daily Dawson, Daily News actually wrote up an article like two or three weeks ago and, um, they had our information with Lamarck and saying how we're trying to be proactive and things like that. So we're getting attention for our, um, our proposal and our, um, proactiveness for the city, so.
What do you need, Mayor? Motion to.
Ms. Nancy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I, I totally agree with this program. I knew we had talked about it before, so I'm glad to see it finally coming to fruition.
Uh, yes, sir. We need a, we need a motion. Is that right, Karen, to approve?
Move that we move forward with this particular program to combat catalytic theft.
I, I second.
Second, any further discussion? Here now, we'll call for a vote. All, all those, uh, yeah. Uh, if I, if, if I, uh, can we, can we, can we vote? And, uh, and maybe get the question afterwards. I, I know, but if I, if I let, if I let you, then, then, then that's going to open a floodgates for all sorts of questions. So let me, let me, let me do this and then we can get it afterwards, if that's, if you don't mind. Uh, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're getting ready to close and then we can, we can maybe try to entertain some of that stuff. Uh, but we can't, we can't allow for that type of participation because it just throws us off course and we'll be here all night. We are now up to items for the good of the order. Uh, and so we will start, Michael always wants to start with ladies first. So Joe, I think it's up to us to maybe give them their grand finale tonight. So I will start. No, I want you all, I, I want you all to finish because you always are.
Wonderful.
So I'll start, uh, and I will simply say, I will simply say, uh, that it's been a long day for us as a council. We have been through a report about our police department uh, that, uh, was filled with all sorts of challenges and opportunities. Uh, and, uh, we, uh, accept it. Uh, and, uh, hosted, uh, Mr. Tim Culp, uh, who is the new, uh, president of the Texas City Lamarck Chamber of Commerce, uh, as well as Mrs., uh, Crystal, I believe, Kristen. Crystal Christensen, Dr. Crystal Christensen, who is the newly minted, uh, campus director at Mainland Preparatory, uh, aside, along with this meeting tonight. Uh, let me just say, there's a lot of work ahead for us. Uh, but I believe that we are headed in the right direction. There are wonderful things in our agenda tonight that suggest that we're headed in the right direction. Uh, such as the council moving toward two meetings so that we can, uh, deliberate on, uh, important issues uh, of our community slowly, uh, and, uh, uh, and deliberately so that we can get community, uh, feedback and buy-in. I believe the half a million dollars that council approved, uh, that will be directed toward District D and the, uh, water line uh, repair and replacement, uh, is a significant step forward tonight. As, as well as, uh, our continued efforts toward making our city the safest city in Texas with this new catalytic converter program. Wonderful, wonderful things that we have in store. A lot of work to do, uh, in our community. And, uh, we are not, as a council, shying away from that. Uh, this council's moving forward, uh, face, facing those things, uh, in our community that we desperately need to address. Thank you, uh, for your time, council, uh, staff, Mr. Garcia. Uh, it's been a wonderful, wonderful day. Ms. Campion.
So, okay, very good.
We're reversing it tonight. Michael, blame Michael.
That's not a problem, not a problem. Number one, uh, during the recent freeze, I had a water break in my line. And I've maybe briefly talked about this. Uh, fortunately, at first I thought it was the, on the city side, but, um, because the, the, uh, what is the box was filled with water. Uh, turned out it was a little break on this side of the box, about a one inch there. Uh, I happened to look online at my water bill and, uh, I had one of those, oh my God, I feel a heart attack moment, uh, because my water bill indicated that, um, I had gone through twelve thousand gallons of water as a result of that particular break. Now, uh, my immediate thought first, Mayor, actually was, you lied, says so, you lied about the water bill, right? Not going up that much as a result of our new, of our new rates. But then I recalled I had the, the break. Uh, I, I, I fortunately, it's only about a hundred and forty-seven dollars that even with the twelve thousand. So two messages. Number one, I hope that we still continue as a community of, of, of empathetic individuals, that those people that struggle with water line breaks have some sort of ability to adjust their rates. I'm not asking for that myself. I'll pay my bill. I can unfortunately to be able to do that. Um, I also want to say on the plus side is that if you have a pool in Lamarck, you're really not paying that much for your water. Because those twelve thousand gallons actually represented a pool, I believe the dimensions were thirteen feet wide by twenty-something feet long, something that, that size. So that's an excellent value for, for water, uh, rate based upon, based, based upon that. But more importantly, as I said, for those that face these challenges, I hope that they understand that please don't freak out. Uh, that there is that ability to go to our, our water department and, and will work with you and to accommodate that particular challenge that we have in, 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 in that situation. Number two, I want to express my thanks. And this speaks to city Mr. City Manager, your recent, uh, certificate on the, uh, training that you received. About three days ago, there was, I was turning here down on Bayou. Actually, I think it was the day Kyle were returning the, the vehicles for the trip to, to Dallas. And just as I'm turning, I saw a gentleman who, for whatever reason, was traveling down Bayou in one of those, uh, walkers with wheels and, but he was going backwards, pushing himself as opposed to going forward. And in that process, right there at the driveway of the church's fried chicken, he fell over. And he sprawled out on the road. I saw him hit his head and jumped up and I, I stopped immediately and the truck behind me almost, I stopped too quickly, fortunately did hit me. But it was a company called Yards Excellence, I believe. Arthur, is it Arthur? Arthur's his name, Art.
I, I don't know, I know they're right around.
They're right around. Well, they stopped and they assisted me in getting the gentleman up. Now, uh, initially I was very insistent that he stop and get the assistance. I, uh, actually called Chief Merriman and Chief, um, there's this, this has happened. But as I'm engaging with him, he became very combative and he indicated that he didn't need assistance. That, uh, what he wanted was an Arizona tea. So that alerted me from my crisis training that there were special needs here with regard to this. And the best thing that I could do is to just walk away and not aggravate that particular situation. And, and, um, and that's what I did. Chief Merriman, I reported that to you. And, um, it was funny though, when I came to City Hall and then went back, I, he said he was going to send the ambulance out to the location. But when I was driving back, I noticed the ambulance at an entirely different location. I said, Chief, I think your guys are the wrong place. The gentleman is at the pilgrim's cleaners now and your ambulance is at the auto repair shop that's one block down. Well, ultimately they did make in contact with him and, uh, he once again refused the service. Uh, but what I'm just trying to say is that, um, I, I want to express my thanks to Yards Excellence. And also for us to be aware that there is a role in our community to, uh, realize that not everyone is, um, is, is at the same level, perhaps in terms of our, of our, um, how can I say this nicely, Gus? In terms of our method of thinking things out, let's put it that way. And, but along those lines, Mayor and, uh, Mr. City Man, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Police Chief, Mr. Fire Chief, I'd like us to consider, uh, and I'll bring back some material on this, just like we did on the catalytic converter. But perhaps to have a special needs registry, if we don't have one already. Not one that's the evacuation, but a special needs registry where we're all aware of the conditions of maybe we have a senior that lives in a house by themselves. Um, and as you're engaging with them and as you're getting the call, that at least your officers and your firemen know that there is a special condition that exists on this side. But I'll kind of work something up and I'll get that to you on that side. And, um, and once again, thank you. It's the beginning of the year, so we have a lot to do. I appreciate everything. Appreciate the council and, um, city manager and all staff.
Very good. Ladies.
This, I, I just wanted to share the information on a, um, Black History Talent Show that's being put on by the Future is Us, which is an organization based in Galveston. And I'm sure there's lots of very groovy events happening here in Lamarck, but I happen to know of this one intimately just because I work with this organization a lot in Galveston in my, um, in my paying job, in my daytime gig. Um, but the Future is Us is a really, uh, very cool nonprofit organization that's funded by the Hogg Family, uh, Foundation for Mental Health. And they're the product of a collaborative that I am part of in, in, um, Galveston called Aces to Assets, which is all about lots of people in the community working together to try and break the school to prison pipeline and to support Galveston youth in particular, just in all the ways. And, um, this organization in particular works with kid, with black and brown kids, but all kids in Galveston ISD and they're doing, they're putting on a Black History Talent Show that'll be at Ball High on February twenty-fifth at five PM. It's free and I know they've been working really hard on it and it sounds like it'll be a lot of fun. And like I said, I'm, know there's lots of events, but this is just one in particular that I know the people who are putting it on, they're working really hard. And the farmer's market will be contributing a lot of door prizes, so, um, uh, that's it. And I want to, uh, I just wanted, that's not it, I guess. I wanted to also recognize the mayor was insistent earlier that, um, you know, that Kim is walking history and that's true. She is and you are, and it's an honor to sit with you and serve with you. And it's also an honor to sit and serve with you, Mayor. You are also walking history. And, um, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much, Casey. Uh, I'm a little delirious since we've been here since. But I just want to say happy Valentine's to, um, to everyone. Um, love is very important to me. Uh, marriage is very important and partnerships. If you have someone to love, it is a blessing. So I hope that, that we will honor that our country takes time out to love, to show love on tomorrow. Um, I did get a chance to visit the Unity Museum in Galveston, which I encourage everyone to go see the museum on the strand, um, as we celebrate, uh, American history this month and through, uh, through the lens of African Americans. Just, it's, it's amazing. It's a sacred space. It's right across the street from, uh, one of the biggest slave auctions that used to happen in Galveston. So that whole area, that whole area has a different feel to it, uh, when you enter that museum. So I want to encourage you to go there. And with that, Mayor, I think we've had a very impactful day and I'm looking forward to our next meeting.
Very good. Caesar, did you have anything you want to add?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's seven forty. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor? Stand adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone.